Well, we're going to begin. Good morning. Welcome to the Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. In this historic event and historic place, I'm so excited to be here. Let me just for the record say it's Wednesday, May 2nd, 2018. And we are at the Shempui Park Visitor Center in the auditorium. 8239 Shempui Road Northeast in St. Paul. We always begin our board meetings with a pledge of allegiance and we invite you to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So before we start our board agenda, just want to thank everyone who made this possible, especially Jolene Kelly. I know she worked really hard on this. And who else was working with her on that? Kristi, Kristi Witherall, and Lisa Trauernecht.
And CCTV.
And CCTV for being here. And all of the folks at Shempui that we worked with for making this possible. Greg Leo for being our liaison and getting us started. And all of you that have business for coming all the way up here to the north part of the county. What a lovely day for a drive.
Oh my gosh.
And just as I was coming in and seeing all of the vistas and it just, I thought, what was it like for all of those people to gather on that historic day and create this county and this government that we have that we're so fortunate to have? So anyway, thank you all for being here and for being part of this event. So our first item is public comment. And if you're a dignitary, you're not going to be in this part of the, this is just for the public, citizens who might have come that wanted to talk to the commissioners. So did any, we don't have anyone signed up. I just wanted to know if anyone didn't get a chance to sign up. All right, well then we're going to move into our presentation. And we are starting out with John Mullen, the park manager for Shempui State Heritage Area.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you. If you would have a seat and speak in the microphone because our cameras can't pick you up unless you're speaking in the microphone.
I tend to be one who walks around when I talk to folks, especially with people at my back.
You're in a friendly crowd. They're going to be fine.
Well, welcome you all. And welcome to Shempui State Park or State Heritage Area. It's an honor to have you all here. And I just wanted to give a few words of welcome from Oregon State Parks and this beautiful place. We also have the privilege of managing some other parks up and down the Willamette River, our Greenways, and also the Malala River over in Clackamas County. So, and yes, welcome to the north end of the county. I also want to thank you for some of the assistance the county has provided through enforcement officers up here at this end of the county because that's been a big help. And it's helped both the community around here as well as the state park. You're familiar with the park and it's got 90-some campsites and three group tent sites and an RV group site and about 12 different day, reservable day use areas. And we're gearing up. So we've already had a couple of large running events, but this weekend's of course our 175th Founder's Day happening on Saturday where we'll have a fur trader's encampment. We'll have some facades that might have been there back in the day when the town of Shempui was actually around and demonstrating perhaps in blacksmith or something of that effect. And then of course at 1:00 have the celebration at the memorial down there. So happy 175th to the county, Marion County as well. And then, you know, this, this place just as you know brings so much to the north end and not to raise our flag, but indeed we have events on weekends now and throughout the week. We just had the Monster Cookie Riot coming up from Salem. About 1,200 bicycle riders that come from Salem, they meet up here, then turn around and head back. And it's those sort of things that really bring vitality to the state park up here as well as some work we're doing with the Confederate tribes, the Grand Ron and creating a, restoring a prairie here, but also a food gathering location. And so I see you've got Dr. Lewis here, a little layer, who will speak to some of the indigenous history of these parks. But really all I'm here for is to give you a welcome. And if you've got any questions about the area or state parks by all means, but I thank you for being here and welcome to Shempui.
Thanks for having us.
Any questions?
Well, this is mine or just to me. So I have known that camas has been an important plant and they say I can find it in Busch Park and I've seen some possible. So it was just delightful to walk in and really get to take a look at one. And I think I mowed them up. I'll never do it again.
Thanks for recognizing those. If you haven't seen those on the way in, there's some purplish, bluish flowers on the way in that are camas. But then also if you go just basically either end of the park, but especially right now, the western end of the park, as you drive to the western end, perhaps after your session here, and you look off to the left, you'll see shades of blue out there. So it's pretty, it's pretty thick out there right now.
Hey, good.
Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, so then we have David G. Lewis, PhD, Native American historian. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks for inviting me. So thank you for inviting me to this event. It's an amazing event to be here at 175 years. Marion County, the original name for Marion County came from apparently a General Marion. And, but before that, Marion County was Shempui County or Shempuig County. And so that was one of the first, if not the first county for Oregon, named after essentially this place, Shempuig. So, and we all know that, that's common history. But, but the Calipue people on this, in this valley here were probably here for 10,000 years or more. We obviously don't know how far back they go because the Missoula floods buried their earlier villages. So that means something like 400 generations of people were here. That's a very long time. People learned to live in this place. This is their land, their place for, you know, 400 generations and took advantage of all the vegetable and animal resources they had. Had villages up and down the river here and Shempui, Chamecada, Chamawa, Chahalem, they're all, these are all native places, native villages and tribes that were here. So there were some 20,000, 25,000 people in this area of just Calipue descent. And that's not counting the other neighboring tribes in the area. And so, Calipueans lived somewhat back from the river because they, they knew that the river would flood. And I talked to people around here about how they probably were laughing at the Americans who came here and put, built their towns right on the river because they knew that eventually they would flood out. And that's exactly what happened here. So, but the Calipueans lived, were not very warlike people. They were very peaceful. They got along with their neighbors. They were not agriculturalists, but they did harvest camas and yampa and guapito and acorns and lots of other plants in the area. In fact, to the point where it may be that something like 75% of their diet was actually plant life rather than animals because plants are easy to find and they don't fight back. So that's, that's something I tell my students all the time and I actually, I actually teach at colleges and stuff so that I'm talking to them about the Calipue people all the time. So, the Calipueans went, really welcomed the American settlers when they came here. They, they knew that the Americans and the French Canadians were very rich, had a lot of things they wanted, guns, fabrics, glass beads, things they liked. And so they, they wanted to, they had their children marry into the families. So many of the French Canadian and American settlers that were here in the valley, in French Prairie, literally married native women, native, you know, Calipuean, Chinook and other native women from this area. And so today, a lot of these, the French Canadian families that still have their farms here, still have names on the landscape are actually, you know, part Native American really in their, their ancestry. And the tribes were, went through a horrible disease epidemic in the 1830s and probably into the 1840s. And so something like 95% of the tribes, people disappeared because they had no resistance to diseases like malaria, which is probably the main sort of vector that killed them. And so by the time settlements began for the Americans in the valley, there were very few people left. Most villages were maybe a few dozen people at the most. And so the land was open essentially for settlement at that point. This land had been taken care of by them for, you know, thousands of years. Anthropologists and others have noted that they set fire to this place every year, probably in late September, and would let it burn across the prairie to sort of burn off the extra, excess undergrowth because if you live in Oregon at all, you know that we have way too much growth of plants. And so fire is the most efficient way to, to sort of cleanse the land and clean it up. And that actually prepared the land really well for settlement because it cleared off the prairies and made it look like a very sort of park-like, farm-like, ranch-like setting where people could set, put their farms. And so, and there was no resistance. So the Calipueans saw the Americans coming in, provided no resistance and in fact, worked for them in many ways, worked with them. Calipuean men would hire on to, as day laborers perhaps, to build barns, build fences, learn animal husbandry and farming. And so the Calipueans were really a essential part of the whole fabric of this community from the very beginning and have been all along. You know, native people have always been here. For a while, the tribes were taken and placed at the Grand Ron Indian Reservation. Most of the Calipueans went there. And most of the Calipueans still, you know, relate their ancestry now to Grand Ron, being 100 to 150 years at Grand Ron. And that's, you know, my, where I came from, my family came from there. My, my personal history is, you know, Saniam, Tekelma and Chinook ancestry. So that's, that admixture of some 27 to 35 tribes at Grand Ron created this amazing, you know, now race of people, the Grand Ron people that now we've, we've gotten restored and we're coming back from being, you know, terminated. And we're trying to do what we can to care for the land again like we had for 10,000 years. You know, this is our place. Our people have been buried here for 400 generations. So we really, the tribes, tribal people really, really see this as still our place even though we sold it in treaties in the 1850s and moved away by agreement. We still have a lot of heritage here. You know, the little, literally the soil of the land are parts of our people, which is an interesting way to think about it, but that's the way it is. You know, we cared for and, and lived on this soil for a very long time. And so, the Calipueans are still here. That's my message. Thank you for inviting me. Any, any questions at all?
Thank you very much. Fascinating history.
Well, I'd kind of like to talk to you afterwards if you're still.
Sure. I sensed that about you.
Did you? No, wait, I have a little connection and I can say this much. My great-grandfather was the last Indian agent at Grand Ron. They closed the farm up at St. Paul, moved up there for seven or eight years. Grover Cleveland appointed him. And then they dissolved the tribe, said that they're ready to be out in the world like anybody else. And I know the story.
I've, I've, I've actually studied your great-grandfather.
Seriously?
Or grandfather.
I would like to talk.
Brett, no, right. Exactly. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, I hope it was good what you found.
It wasn't until it got to you.
The last presenter is Greg Leo, friends of Historic Butteville. Morning Greg.
Good morning. Thank you Commissioner Carlson. Members of the Marion County Commission for the record, my name is Greg Leo. I live at 9318 Shempuig Road in a farm that I have named Wolf Meeting Farm. So the wolf meetings to me are a very personal thing because I live here in the neighborhood. Basically what we are celebrating today, and it happened on a Tuesday, May 2nd, 1843, 175 years ago, is the creation of the provisional government of Oregon. This was the first government, really the first American-style government on the west coast, on the Pacific coast. The reasons for these meetings, and there was a series of them, about four of them, was in theory to organize anti-bear campaign to control wolves, bears, panthers and other predators on the new livestock that was now coming into this part of Oregon. But this was not really the reason. It was found as a reason to gather people together because it was an amazing practical problem that the settlers had. But there was a number of other problems that Oregonians at that point faced that they didn't have a solution for. And just to kind of give a context here, at the March 6th wolf meeting, they determined that they would pay 50 cents for a small wolf, $1.50 for a lynx, $2.00 for a bear, $3.00 for a large wolf and $5.00 for a panther. By panther, I think they mean cougar. The continuity of government issues spans 175-year period. Oregon paid a bounty on wolves as late as 1947. To this very day, we have a Marion County trapper who takes care of, you know, animals which would attack people or livestock. So the purpose, the purpose of government really was to protect people and property. The purpose of the Marion County government today is the same. So this wonderful continuity of self-government where people came, these trappers had been all over the Intermountain West. They'd been to every river system. They'd seen all the beautiful bottom land across the west trapping the beaver. And this is the place they settled. And they settled here partly because the Hudson's Bay Company had found this sandy beach. They had a navigation really on the Willamette River. They had a low bank. They didn't have to fight through the brush to get the batteau, to get to the batteau, which was the canoe they used to travel up and down the river. And for that reason, the Hudson's Bay Company created the warehouse here. Shempuig is commonly, that's probably the best pronunciation as a, as a kid. I always knew it as Shempui. That's what most kids call it. But Shempuig is, they think based on the idea that this was Calipuean for a good place to find, a place to find good things to eat. And they think it's roughly because of the yampa root, which is a type of root, which is kind of like a carrot that they found here. That's as near as they can get to the derivation of why they call it Shempui. So when they got here, they had to think about government and what they wanted as a government. And so they went through the things that they thought a government should have. Ewing Young had just in 1837 had brought up 400 curly-horned Spanish cattle from the Bay Area. The Hudson's Bay Company previously would rent you a cow to milk, but would not sell you a steer to eat because they didn't want to really encourage settlement by non-Hudson's Bay Company people in this area. So when Ewing Young brought the cattle up from California, created agriculture as we know it and the ability to support life for the settlers. But then Ewing Young died and he died without a will. And the settlers had to figure out a legal way to probate his estate. And that's really what caused the first wolf meeting to happen. In the course of things, they decided the legislature was good. And on the 5th of July, created the Organic Acts and created the first Oregon legislature. Interestingly, on the day of the vote, and you can see the, should go, I think it's Frederick Jugod painting behind you, you see Joe Meek waving his hat there saying, "Our side won", literally. It was a split decision. It was 50 French Canadians that did not want to organize, 50 settlers who did want to organize, and two very important people who crossed over. Francis Xavier Mathieu, who had left Canada because of his Republican feelings. He felt he, that we needed to have a Republican candidate, not be part of the British Crown. And N.T.N. Lucier, who was the first farmer in the Willamette Valley. They crossed over because of freedom. They came here to be free, to not be part of the British Empire, and they crossed over at the critical vote and we won by two votes. So that's what's happened 175 years ago today. And it created the first government in Oregon. It created the first county, really on, it's July 5th, because after they declared the provisional government, they had a patriotic celebration on the 4th. And the day after is when they determined the four counties. And of course, the original county is our Marion County or Shempuig County. So we celebrate a great event today. A really an event about self-government, about free people associating together to create the means of supporting and protecting life, the means of having agriculture, a fair system of laws that apply equally, and really all of the values that I think Oregonians hold dear. And I will just say finally that if people see Oregonians as being kind of cussedly independent, it's because our DNA is rooted in people who were irascible and survived and got here. And once they got here, they decided to be free and independent Americans. And that's what we celebrate here at Shempui today. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you Greg. Thank you for your service too on the Public Safety Coordinating Council and our steering committee and Sheriff's Citizen Advisory Committee who do a great service for Marion County.
Thank you. I would say Todd Bay, our Marion County deputy walks in the same shoes as Joe Meek.
Thank you. And I was just thinking about when we did the 150 miles for 150 years on Oregon's 150th anniversary and going out to the Butteville store and all of those motorcyclists and really enjoying that too, the work that you do there.
The Butteville, Shempui community support, really appreciates the support of the county commission. Thank you so much for law enforcement, traffic assistance, helping us with the Butteville landing, all the many good things that you do for North County people. We're most appreciative.
Ma'am, I'm sure, thank you. Greg, thank you for the history lesson and I'm sure there's a lot more in your head that you could share with us today.
Thank you.
It was interesting that you said we won by two votes. That's all we need up here too.
It's amazing.
Some things never change. 175 years and it's the same issues.
That's great.
Thank you so much.
Excuse me Greg, I had a couple of thoughts and they are just thoughts. And Kevin caught the one, elections have consequences. I'm just doing a quick think, it would have been a whole bunch different without that. The other was talking about the trappers and wolves. You know, one of the biggest budget, well, I wouldn't say fight, but contentious thing was continue funding that, that county trapper. And we have to specially, I have to look every year to make sure it's in there. And then I noticed the restrictions put on them today. Suddenly they're not taking care of beavers at a time when Marion County crops are switching to true, filberts, let's just be serious. And, and fruit trees that are especially susceptible to some conditions. But anyway, it's still an issue and it, that is interesting.
Yes, Commissioner Brentano, for the record, I will say that, you know, as a farmer that has a couple of sheep, I can tell you that we have neighbors that have lost sheep to coyotes. In fact, we had a pregnant ewe that was, you know, killed by a coyote just two years ago. And so to this day, we worry about wolves, well, coyotes, not really wolves so much, but this side of the mountains. But we are very concerned about these issues and it's the things that Oregonians ask their government to do for them is to make sure that our property and our safe, our persons are safe. And thank you government for doing this, so.
So I don't know what it means as we reintroduce wolves. Is that supposed to mean we're supposed to go away again? Is it just a cycle? I've actually seen one just to scare you in Staton, so be ready.
Yeah. And yes, it's, it's still an issue today and hopefully one we can get our arms around, so.
You fight for that budget every year, you say?
Yes.
Does that right along with the mosquito spray that you fight for?
Well, there's nine new diseases mosquito borne just on the news this morning.
Vector control.
Thank you for the opportunity to discuss our history today. Thank you.
So we're going to move what were they're calling community highlights to this point in the agenda right now. What's that? No, we're, we're actually going to have the community highlights and then do the proclamation. All right? So, so I know Kathy Fickley's in the audience. Did you want to come up and say a few words? And then is it Mayor Olmstead, is that right, from Donald? And are there any other mayors or city councilors here that came from North County cities to present today? All right, great. It's Kathy, good morning.
Well, good morning and welcome. And thank you so much for coming up to the North County this morning. I had the enjoyment of driving from home over here and just really enjoying a beautiful part of the county and a beautiful part of the world. I also want to thank you for having crews out working on Boons Ferry Road, which desperately needed it. I'm happy to be slowed down in a good cause, and that is a good cause. From a point of view of community highlights, one that actually fits in very well with kind of the theme this morning is Woodburn recently was honored by Travel Oregon for its now almost 55-year-old, it will be 55-years-old Fiesta Mexicana. It was designated a heritage event on a par with the Pendleton Roundup and other very longstanding events last year. And we received award for best heritage event from Travel Oregon. And I got to go over to bend and pick it up and by the way, enjoy the charms and beauties of the east part of the county. So I've gotten around in the past week. I do, you know, I think we're doing a lot of things. We're growing rapidly. We're up to 1,600 housing applications in recent stages of approval, which is kind of amazing and kind of scary. And we are also going to do something that you're very familiar with, move out of City Hall for a few months so we can deal with a lot of deferred maintenance that's cheaper and easier to deal with when there aren't people on the ground floor. So we're looking forward to that. Again, we appreciate you coming up here and we enjoy the opportunity to celebrate this event. Our, we are going to be 130-years-old as an incorporated city next month, so we seem like babies now compared to Marion County. And very definitely, you know, listening to Dr. Lewis, I think of our human hair found, you know, on our high school grounds, you know, as part of our excavations, which may be as old as 15,000-years-old. And so 175 years is a long time for people, but on the other hand, in human history, it's a little drop in the bucket, but it's still something to celebrate. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know she's leaving, but I wanted to comment and I mentioned this to her. We, I guess I've been kind of bragging about the effort we put into North County here and roads and sheriff protection. Pretty happy with myself. So we turn off to come in here and what do I see is a traffic accident down the road. So apparently we still have more work to do.
Was that an accident?
Well, I'm not sure.
I saw it backed up. I thought maybe the area had been working on the road, but it was, it was backed up. I came up river road, yeah.
There, Olmstead. Thank you for being here.
Good morning. It's nice to see you all again. I'm Rick Olmstead. I'm mayor of Donald. And it was a, a long commute to get here, but wonderful day and I, and this is a wonderful place. And I learned a lot of interesting things that I didn't know before. So Donald, Donald, one of the largest things that Donald is doing is we've just finished an urban growth boundary expansion study. A multi-month process. Last Thursday, it was the, the suggestion of the Technical Advisory Committee was approved by the Planning Commission. And it's moving forward then to the city council. And what the, what is being suggested is an 80-acre expansion for residential use. The population study that was done in 2014 said Donald would expand from 985 to almost 2,000 in the year 2034. People use 985 as the population, but my next-door neighbor has just had a baby, Dylan Legendary. And so I use 986. It's a, that is in itself is an interesting process. And I was part of the Technical Advisory Committee. The housing, if it was single-family, would work out to 465 houses, but that's for a almost 20-year expansion. Donald has also instituted a local improvement district to re-sidewalk 10 blocks of our downtown core. That's, this is the first phase. Some of the sidewalks are like X-Games. Old established trees, the roots have pushed the slabs of cement up, so if you're not careful, you will discover the ground. So this is a good positive step. We're doing a master water and wastewater study. And we also are finishing up a development code project. And all four of those activities are grant-funded. And I was talking to Mike Cully at a League of Oregon Cities Regional Meeting in Salem recently, and I stressed to him- recently, and I stressed to him that without grant funding, small cities couldn't do these things. And so I'm happy for your support for the grants, and that really allows Donald to accomplish things that they couldn't on their own or would have to put off into the future. And lastly, it may be a small thing to some, but we're having a speed transition area put in from the south on Butteville Road coming up from Woodburn and Broad Acres. Right now, it's 55-25, and now it's going to be 55-40-25 to try and slow traffic down to our very busy four-way stop sign. But the problem is, there's a lot of housing in the transition zone, and people use it as a racetrack on all four directions. That's one of the most common complaints that we have, is that people are going too fast. So hopefully, we can help alleviate that problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I just wanted to also comment about the jobs that you just brought, or that you bring into the Donald area with the Wilco Distribution Center and their hazelnut processing and
Yes.
And the GK Machines does fantastic work for farm and ag equipment for all around the world, basically. It's an amazing little spot that people don't know a lot about, and you have a really good place for breakfast.
Thank you.
I always look for those.
One of the main drivers for the UGB expansion is workforce housing.
Right.
And because GK Machine has expanded, they can recruit, but they can't keep their workers long-term because of the long commutes. Wilco, Wilco's bringing in 40 new jobs as well as transitioning jobs from other areas. And as the Donald Industrial Park expands to its full capacity, more jobs will be cited in Donald. Bear Electric has mentioned the same thing, they can't keep their workers. And also, I was at a school board meeting, and they were saying about teachers and staff, the same sort of thing. Marion County School District is co-located between Aurora Hubbard and Donald. They have a great need for housing, local housing as well.
Yeah, it's really good, and I don't think the governor's office is here, but they've been really helpful. James LaBarre from Regional Solutions has been a real asset in helping with all that too, so I want to give them the credit that they deserve. So, thank you, Mayor. Really appreciate your service.
Before you go, just a comment. I'm thinking, I just had the thrill of driving through the Donald interchange this morning and reminding me why we made it such a priority, both the county and our area Transportation Committee and ODOT. So there is some funding to start the study, but as we watched in Woodburn, it takes a long time to get anything done, but at least we're starting.
I waited almost three hours to exit on using that interchange during a snow event two years ago. That is not the norm, but it is a very over, it's a failed interchange. And as a resident of Donald, I try to avoid it at all costs.
You know, I tell this story, and I can't remember the people's name, but a young couple with some kids were at an event I was at, and I heard they were from Donald, and I said, "So do you have trouble with that interchange like everybody else?" And he said, "Oh, no." He says, and they live right here, he says, "When we got to get on the freeway, we go to Woodburn." So.
Yes, it's a very nice drive down Butteville into Woodburn. All right, thank you very much.
Anyone else that represents the city? All right, well, now we'll move on to our action items, and our first proclamation is the one that we're here for. And Jolene Kelly, you're going to kick this off, right? So this is a consider approval of a proclamation recognizing the 175th anniversary of Marion County. So would you come up and then introduce the people that you're with? Got to get Facebook Live going, you're right, yeah, okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. For the record, I'm Jolene Kelly. I'm Marion County Public Information Officer, and I have had the privilege of helping organize this event today, as well as the Marion County 175 festivities, which I'll talk about in a minute. I'm joined today with Michael Timman. He's a representative of the Sons of the American Revolution, the Lewis and Clark Chapter, and he is here today representing Francis Marion, who Marion County was named after, after the name was changed from Shempui. So I want to say just a couple of things to let the public know that this meeting today is just a kickoff of some events that we'll be doing throughout the rest of the year that really celebrate the founding of Marion County 175-years ago. One of the things we'll be doing is we have a partnership with Travel Salem where we'll have 175 things to do in Marion County. We're kicking off a social media campaign that will have 175 facts about Marion County, not all historical, but we'll talk about a lot of the things that, the services that we're providing to our community. We have, gosh, you know, there's so many going on, it kind of escaped me. I'm working with Ashley Marshall from our office, and she's working on a self-guided tour of Marion County. We're reviving the relay that was done for the 150 celebration so that people can go and visit all of the communities in Marion County. So we will have that ready to go in about a month. So it's really been a fun opportunity to learn about the history of our area, as well as the history of Oregon, and things that I haven't thought about at all since probably I was in grade school. And so first, before Mr. Timman speaks, I want to say just a couple of things about who Francis Marion was. So Francis Marion was a lieutenant colonel in the Continental Army and then a brigadier general in the South Carolina Militia during the American Revolutionary War. He became known as the Swamp Fox for his ability to use decoys and ambushes to disrupt enemy communication, capture supplies, and free prisoners. His use of non-traditional tactics helped set in motion the decline of open battles in that conflict, and records also indicate that he was a sailor prior to the Revolutionary War. General Marion is credited in the lineage of the United States Army Rangers and other American military special forces. There are 17 counties in the United States named for Francis Marion, as well as numerous cities, parks, and schools. So now I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. The Sons of the American Revolution is a society of direct-line descendants to someone who has served in or assisted the colonies in the Revolutionary War. In my case, my patriot ancestor was Moses Parkehurst, my fourth great-grandfather, who joined the Massachusetts Continental Army in 1779 at the age of 16, and he fought in the last battle of Yorktown and saw the surrender of General Cornwallis to General George Washington. Not bad for being a 20-year-old, huh? Today, I am wearing the general's uniform or the Oregon Continental Color Guard. Our duties are not only to show the colors of parades and celebrations, but as historical interpreters, we teach our children and future generations about the Revolutionary War, about our patriot ancestors like General Francis Marion, and to remind them the price and the responsibility of freedom. To that end, we are building the largest Revolutionary War memorial west of the Mississippi River in Beaverton. It will be an interactive memorial, not only honoring our patriot ancestors, but also through our partners, the School District, the Public Library, and the American Legion, it will teach about the Revolutionary War. I want to conclude by saying it's a pleasure to be here today, not as a teacher, but as a student, to learn more about Marion County and the beginnings of this area when I tour your visitor center. The Swamp Fox and I thank you.
Thank you very much. So when I became a Commissioner in 2003, in the board office, our conference room was called the Swamp Fox Conference Room, and outside of it, it had a picture of General Francis Marion, and then it had a little, another framed one page that had a descriptor of what he did. And then when we had to move out of Courthouse Square, you may have heard that, and then we moved back in a few years later after it was fixed and renamed all of the conference rooms after the cities of Marion County. So we no longer have the Swamp Fox Conference Room, but I always thought that that was a great piece of history for us to have in Courthouse Square.
I found it a little hard to say Swamp Fox.
When we read the calendar, it was like, yeah, the Swamp Fox Conference Room.
Silverton's so easy.
Yeah, it is, very easy.
If we could rename the Commissioner's boardroom the Swamp Fox.
Right, there you go. And Christie, do you have the official proclamation copy? I'm going to give you a heads-up to get that out, so I'd like us to sign that after we take this vote, and then I understand, General Francis Marion, that you are going to read the proclamation to us. Do you want to read it before we take the vote or after we take the vote? Why don't we have, why don't we have them read it before we take the vote?
I'll make this official.
Yeah, that would be great.
In a manner of a proclamation recognizing the 175th anniversary of the founding of Marion County, whereas 175-years ago today, early settlers gathered on the bluff overlooking the Willamette River at Shempui to vote on the formation of Oregon's first provincial government, responding to issues such as attacks on livestock by wolves, bears, and cougars, issuing land grants, and settling probate. And whereas, on July 5, 1843, the Oregon Territory Provisional Government was formally established and divided into four districts, including Tualatin, Yamhill, Clackamas, and Shempui, which was later named Shempui. And whereas, in September 1849, Shempui County was renamed Marion County in honor of Revolutionary War General Francis Marion, known as the Swamp Fox, and Salem was designated as a county seat by the territorial legislature. And whereas, in 1851, the Marion County Courthouse Site was donated to Marion County by William H. Wilson, and in 1857, the first of Marion County's three courthouses hosted the Oregon Constitutional Convention. And whereas, on February 14, 1859, Oregon was admitted as the 33rd State of the Union, and on April 4, 1859, the first recorded session of the Marion County Court under statehood was held. And whereas, in 1963, after 120-years, the county court ended and was reorganized as a Board of Commissioners. And whereas today, county government is responsible for public safety, roads and bridges, public and mental health, economic development, property assessment, elections, and much more. And whereas, Marion County has played an integral role in the Oregon's history, and now, therefore, the Marion County Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes the 175th anniversary of the founding of Marion County in 1853, signed and dated the 2nd day of May 2018 in Shempui, Oregon.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the proclamation that recognizes 175th anniversary of the founding of Marion County.
You'll second your motion?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this proclamation. Any discussion? No discussion?
I just, I just, it's just kind of, sometimes you get a little chills up and down your, you know, when you do things, whether it's a Star Spangled Banner or the Pledge of Allegiance or whatever. I just got that just thinking about what happened here 175-years ago. It's just pretty amazing to be sitting here today.
It is. And the government that we have, as we talked about, the republican form of government has been a government that has served us well. And those of you that work with the county know that county government is close to the people, and so it makes it a wonderful opportunity for us as commissioners and for all of the staff that you'll hear from later and other elected officials that work so hard to bring services to Marion County. So shall we take a vote first? All right, so all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's approved unanimously. Thank you.
I was ready to sign early.
I know, you were. So we will sign the proclamation. There we go.
Do you sign the bottom one?
I do. Oh, no, I didn't. Only had two to sign. There we go.
There are only two?
Yeah, two copies. All right, thank you. So we are going to move on to some of our other business, and we have one, two, two more proclamations, right?
Perhaps three.
And a consent agenda.
Perhaps three, and then the consent agenda. So Community Services has the next item of business, and they're gathering around the table now. This is to consider approval of a proclamation designating May 2018 as Foster Care Appreciation Month in Marion County. And we have Tamara Getch, who's with our Community Services Department, Paige Clarkson, our Deputy District Attorney, Armon Fredericks, who is the regional manager for
District Manager.
District Manager, thank you, for child welfare, actually for DHS, right, Department of Human Services. And Jim Seymour is not here, but Josh Graves is here, and Gwen Slappy. You're Gwen, all right? And then, would you introduce yourself?
I'm Janet Weaver.
Janet Weaver, welcome. All right, thank you all for being here. Tam?
Good morning, Commissioners. Again, Tamara Getch, Director for Community Service, and I've had the great pleasure for many years to work with fine partners in our community around helping foster parents in our community who are providing substitute care for our kids who are in need of a safe place to live, to have a nurturing environment, and it's just been a great pleasure. And I just want to kind of start out as to why it's important to me personally. I have, I have a cousin and his wife who have been longtime foster parents. They have actually had a couple of children in their home that they adopted about four years ago, and my sister and brother-in-law have also provided foster care over the years. And though they didn't adopt, the kids adopted our family, and they continue to be at our holiday gatherings and birthday parties, et cetera. And now that they have grown up, have their own children, their own families, they bring those into our family and enrich us greatly. That wouldn't be possible if people in their lives didn't step forward and provide a safe community. Greg Leo talked about the role of government and really there to protect our citizens, and I really kind of think that is a real parallel statement for foster parents. That's the role that foster parents play in providing protection for children who can't protect themselves. In the, more than 20-years ago, the county has started at what was called the Children and Families Commission, and out of that grew an interest to support family preservation, foster parent support. And through the years, that has ebbed and flowed, but by and large, it really has been a group that has been creative, supportive, and really has sustained its efforts to really try to figure out how we can support foster parents in a way that matters. We look for ways that we can provide family preservation opportunities. The biggest goal is to give families the strength that they need, the supports that they need, so they're not in a position of needing foster care, but we know that that's just not possible in some cases, and so we need individuals in our community to step forward, understand what that means, and then be able to open their homes up for children in need. And you'll hear a lot of one-on-ones from these, this panel has a great deal of experience around that, but we're really here today to share with our community about foster parents, the need for foster parents, the role they play, and then how we as a community can make a difference, and then to proclaim May, and we're now in May, as a foster parent appreciation, because they are so deserving. So we'll just go down the line.
Commissioners Josh Graves, Catholic Community Services, thank you for allowing us here today and hearing this proclamation. I was really struck by the history presentations here earlier. I was struck by the history of the Native Americans that lived in this area and the disease they faced, and one of the first things I thought of in regard to this presentation is who took care of the kids as people passed away? Who took care of the children? And I'm absolutely certain that they had their own foster care system where families and communities stepped up and took care of the children. And then I look at that picture back there, and I realize the struggle and the strife that our pioneers here faced, and I think, who took care of the children when families were struck with disease and struck with challenges? And I think about now the amazing system that we have and the work of the Department of Human Services, child welfare, the workers that go out every day to check on children, to take care of children, to make amazing plans, and I think most And, and I think most importantly of the foster parents that give so much of their lives and of their time, and I just really recognize that. Then, as now, we have to take care of the caregivers, and so I just really appreciate the opportunity to recognize foster care as a system, the amazing work that this state does, that this county does, and the amazing work of the caregivers, the foster parents every day.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Paige Clarkson, and I have the privilege of serving the citizens of this county as a Deputy District Attorney in our DA's office, and I too was struck today by all of the neat things that we learned, and specifically during Mr. Leo's presentation. I, I loved the idea of, of our early, our early ancestors attending wolf meetings. And I, I was struck for a couple of reasons. One, I think I, wolf meetings might be more interesting than some of the meetings that I attend on a regular basis, but I realized that, that really, as a member of the District Attorney's Office, where public safety is our primary mission and our primary goal, I think every meeting I sit in could be called a wolf meeting. I think we are constantly trying to keep what threatens our families and our children at bay, not from actual wolves, but to those things that threaten us and that threaten our families and our community, and there is nothing more important than our children and our families. And as Tammy said, we have an amazing group of folks in Marion County that have already rallied to try to keep those, those things that threaten our children, our families, those wolves at bay, and I think you see a lot of them here at the table, but I want to add the District Attorney's voice in the support of what foster parents do in our community, and they're, they're first-line defenders of children and families, keeping those threats away from children. The reality is that we have a number of children in care, and I think you're probably going to hear about that from Mr. Fredericks as we get down the line here, and in Marion County, we, we struggle with, with some of those wolves, some of those things that are, are dangerous to our, to our children. And we have an obligation as a community to try to, to fend that off, and again, as foster parents struggle in that, they really are the first line of defense for that, for that process, and as a community, we have an obligation to support them. As District Attorneys who engage in the dependency process, here in Marion County, we have really a view of what that struggle is for some of these children, and what foster parents do for those kids that are in care, those kids that are faced with long court processes in attempts to try to make their families whole and make them healthy and safe for them, their world can be very chaotic. And foster parents serve as that constant, that consistent, that safe environment for them, and, and it really is the, the first place, the first line of defense for them to feel safe in what is otherwise a world that has been turned a bit upside down for them. And the success of them, as we kind of get them through that process, really depends on, on those safe environments, good, caring people who are willing to step up and care for children that are not their own by nature, but are their own by nurture and, and by that, that compassion that they show for kids in our community. So I'm grateful to them. I want to add our voice to that to show how grateful we are for that, the work that they do. I think we have an obligation to, to support those that are already doing it, but to also find ways to encourage more to want to engage in that process, and I think that's one of the main missions of the Preservation Action Team, is to find ways to really give credit to those that are doing that hard work, keeping those wolves at bay, and encourage more to want to, to want to come in and really wrap their arms around those children to keep them safer. So I'm pleased that we have the opportunity to, to make May a recognition in that effort, and I thank you for the opportunity to be here today to talk about that.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. My name is Gwen Slippie, and I am a Recruitment Retention Specialist for Child Welfare. I'm just happy to be here today. Prior to coming to child welfare as an employee, I was a foster parent for seven years and adopted two children through the system, and this is close to my heart in a personal way. So I'm going to share with you just a few sobering statistics in regards to foster care. Currently, we have 605 children in Marion County in foster care. 192 of those children are in relative care, which means likely the family has been emergently certified to take children that they know or that they're related to. 269 providers in Marion County. Only 77 of those providers are general foster parents, foster parents who have chosen to become a foster parent. The other 213 are the relative childcare providers. 413 children of the 605 are in 77 of our homes in Marion County. Our foster parents are taking on a heavy load, and the support, and just declaring this Foster Care Month and bringing that to light is a huge support, I think, for them as well, to just acknowledge who they are and the work that they're doing in our community. So just to finish up, I want to introduce Janet Weaver. She's one of our beloved foster parents, and she's going to tell you a little bit about her journey of foster care.
I'd like to, because I believe Janet should have the last and best word here-
Oh, boy.
-as a foster parent. Commissioners, thank you for having us today. My name is Ormon Fredericks. I'm the DHS District Manager for Marion, Polk, and Yamhill Counties. You know, this whole morning has been about community and keeping people safe and serving their needs. Foster parents, for a long time, work in the shadows, and it's always been sort of considered a DHS issue. In this county, we have, you know, I'd like to think we're doing things a lot differently than other counties, as you can see from the people here that stand shoulder to shoulder with DHS to keep our children safe in this community. I'd like to think of my workers, the DA's office, law enforcement as the front lines in responding to child abuse, but we need an ER room, you know, and our foster homes, they are the emergency rooms. They take our most vulnerable, damaged children, keep them safe, give them loving homes, and they do a public service that very rarely gets recognized, or as Gwen was saying, you know, shone the light to the rest of the community. So I want to thank you for this proclamation today in shining a light on the service that foster parents provide for this community, and what they do is a community service. These are Marion County families who are stepping up without requests for reward or recognition to care for our most vulnerable, so thank you for doing that, and thank you to my partners, because it takes a community to keep our kids safe. So thank you. Janet Weaver, our foster parent.
I did not become a foster parent to speak publicly. I'm just going to tell you that. This is hard for me. I'm glad to see Commissioner Brentano here. My daughter Tamara graduated from St. Paul High School last year, and like one of 90% of the children in the sports program, and anytime there was an event at St. Paul High School, about a third of the spectators were Brentannos, our relatives of Brentannos.
I was at a fair.
And they were playing in the, on the team, so we know the Brentano family very well. The reason I'm doing this is I'm a true believer in the foster care system, the difference it makes in a child's life. Our journey began 16 years ago with the adoption of our daughter Tamara. We were in the Foster to Adopt Program with DHS and welcomed our daughter into our family when she was two years old. When Tamara was in grade school, she informed us that she wanted us to begin fostering again. She said she realized the difference we had made in her life, and she wanted to pay it forward. Seven years and some 20 placements later, we are still receiving blessings every day from our foster kids. These little ones have taught us so much. There's no need for trips to Disneyland, expensive toys, or non-stop entertainment. In our home, they receive love, safety, nutritious food, continuity, and structure. They begin to become joyful and carefree. They are able to become kids once again. As a foster parent, we are in the trenches with the team, and DHS has taken a lot of hits recently, but I want to say, one-on-one that people I've worked with are amazing. They really are. For example, when we're waiting for a foster child, Anita Gonzalez, who works the shelter desk, sends them our way. When we are dealing with a difficult placement, Arma Brundage, foster parent trainer, shares her wisdom. When we have a need for information and help, Sarah King, our certifier, is always willing to assist us. The children's workers, the visitation supervisors, and CPS workers, all these people care for and support both the children and their foster families. It is my hope and prayer that more families fulfill the calling to join us in fostering these children. The need is great, and the blessings are endless. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, in the press- That's our formal presentation, but we're willing to take any questions that you may have, and I just want to say thank you for being here, but also thank you to all the organizations that, that support foster parents in our community. We would fill this room many times again, and this isn't a lonely journey. This is a journey that you have support and engagement by, at many levels, and so, and we also recognize that becoming a foster parent sometimes is, is a journey. You may start as providing substitute care for somebody, or you know, we call it babysitting, all right, but you become somebody who can provide care for a child who is in a foster home, once you go through the steps that is needed to ensure that they have a safe environment. You may become a CASA, which is still needed in our county. You may be able to provide after-school care and support. Whatever your journey looks like, we just ask people to look at what they can do in their own backyard to make a difference in the lives of kids and to support foster families in our community, because 400-plus kids in 77 homes, if it was a choice of all of those to have that many children in their homes, I think that we'd be talking about a different thing. But I think right now, we don't have a whole lot of choices, and we would love to have a cadre of supports and options so that we could match a child's needs with a family's abilities, and at this point in time right now, we're just looking for safe environments that work for us to provide care, to look for the next option. So, thank you for recognizing foster parents, and we're open for questions.
Thank you. A question for Janet, being another Janet. So as a foster parent, we were talking about foster parents needing support, what, maybe, I won't ask you to pick the most important thing, because people always get like it, well, is this the most important, but what are one or two important things that would help you do your job as a foster parent to the best of your ability?
I've heard from other foster parents, and I've faced a situation myself, if you don't have a large family to help you out when you need to do things with these children, there's always doctor's appointments, court dates, meetings with the lawyers, all these things we have to do, and if you have more than one child in your home, it's difficult to find care for the other children where you're doing, where you're caring for this one child. So I, we've talked about before maybe having a better respite community, where people have a list of names you can call, are you available to watch this child, why go do this, would really help quite a bit.
Great.
And the other, let's see, there was one thing that came to my mind, if I can remember what it is now. I guess, I guess that would probably be the, the main one.
All right, thank you. Questions?
Just comment, inspiring, hopeful, and I help you get the message out. Tamara, you pretty much said it, that we need more people to help, and I wish I could. It doesn't work. So.
Do you want to make a motion?
I would love to. Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve, or we, we approve a matter observing Foster Parent Appreciation Month of May.
Second the motion.
Okay, so a motion and second to approve the proclamation designating May 2018 as Foster Care Appreciation Month in Marion County. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
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 All right, that's approved. So why don't we now read the proclamation, as is our custom? Commissioner Cameron, would you like to start?
In the matter of observing Foster Parent Appreciation Month, this matter came before the Marion County Board of Commissioners at its regularly scheduled public meeting on Wednesday, May 2nd, 2018. Whereas we recognize that the growth and development of children is the utmost important, and every child deserves a safe, loving, and stable home, and whereas many children in our community must be temporarily removed from their homes to ensure that the child's physical and emotional needs are addressed, and-
Whereas foster parents who open their hearts in homes to support children whose birth families are in crisis play a vital role in providing a safe, strong foundation for children, and whereas there are numerous individuals in public and private organizations, the courts, in the faith-based community who work to support the foster care system and recruit foster families, and-
Whereas May has been designated National Foster Care Month, and this year's theme is Empowering Caregivers, Strengthening Families, which emphasizes the importance of identifying, developing, and supporting prospective and current foster parents. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Marion County Board of Commissioners join with all those involved in the foster care system to thank individuals and families that provide support, affection, love, and security to children in their care, as well as those organizations and agencies that support foster families and proclaim the month of May as Foster Parent Appreciation Month in Marion County. Thank you.
Thanks, Janet. Thank you.
You're welcome. So we are going to sign this proclamation also. And as we're doing that, we'll call up the last proclamation that we have today, I think.
We know of.
That we know of, all right. And this is to consider approval of a proclamation designating May 2018 as Mental Health Month in Marion County. We have Carrie Muller, who is our Health and Human Services Administrator, Philip Blair, and Robyn Cisco, and-
Mary Bazell.
All right, thank you for being here. So let's start with Carrie.
Good morning, Commissioners. Again, I'm Carrie Muller. I'm the Administrator for Marion County Health and Human Services, and we're here today with a request for a proclamation to declare May as Mental Health Month in Marion County. I just want to say how much I appreciate sort of ending the series of proclamations today on the note of mental health. I think it's so very, very vital that we have the opportunity to talk about mental health in a way that reduces the longstanding stigma that has been associated with seeking mental health treatment. So, again, from our early settlers to the children's foster care system and to all of the citizens of Marion County, being willing to talk about openly and support people who have mental health issues is so critical, and it's part of the reason why we're here today. I've been in the mental health field for more than 30 years, and time and time again, I have seen incredible resilience, courage, strength of people who take the steps to come forward and recognize that they have and need support in managing a mental health illness, mental health condition. People come with histories of trauma, poverty, substance abuse, and mental health, and we're here today to acknowledge that. One in five children and one in four adults at some point in time in their lives will struggle with a mental health condition, just like having the flu, flu poisoning, cancer, being diagnosed with a mental health condition is not something that is somebody's fault, and I think we really need to remember that. We should treat it and consider it in the same way that we treat all of our health conditions, that it's manageable and that people do get better. We need to encourage and celebrate with people when they seek treatment and challenge longstanding beliefs that are stigmatizing. Mental health struggles touch us all. They touch our neighbors, our friends, our colleagues, our families. Some of us in this room today, some of us listening, have struggled with mental health challenges. It's not a personal weakness or a character defect. Recovery from mental illness is not simply a matter of will or self-determination. Each of us has great potential, can contribute in so many powerful and positive ways. People with mental health challenges get better. They are vibrant, contributing members of our community. And with that, I want to recognize Mary Bazell. Mary's here as an advocate. She comes with a personal story, and I really appreciate her willingness to share that with us and remind us about the positive impact of mental health.
No, my 90-year-old mother said, "Maybe you'll be on TV," and I said, "I hope not." Apparently, apparently. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you today. I'm a mom of four children, adoptive and biological children. Two of my children have struggled with mental health issues and barriers, and it's rather, I'm probably the little, maybe I'm the wet blanket here today. It's rather fitting that I'm here to talk to you today about more awareness for mental health services and support, and about suicide prevention. Today is a six-year anniversary of my, losing my 17-year-old son to suicide. And Christian suffered from bipolar disorder and was on the autism spectrum. So, our family walked alongside Christian through, and I could talk for an hour about the things we've walked through, but we've walked through ER visits, hospitalization, residential treatment stays, outpatient services, developmental disability group home. We also had a wonderful Marion County wraparound team through Marion County New Solutions that was very helpful in making what we did do successful. We lost him in part due to stigma and judgment because he felt different. He felt really, he was greatly aware that he was different from other kids, and we felt that stigma along with him. People don't understand about mental health, they're not aware, and it's really key to helping people early and making it okay to talk about, and to treat it like any other medical condition. And right now, that's not okay, and my son did not feel it was okay to talk about it. Suicide prevention's really important, not only because we are losing people like my son, but each person who dies by suicide creates a ripple effect of other victims. So, we have, you know, other youth that somehow feel helpless and to blame, maybe they should have known something, caregivers and families who wish they'd done something different, all the shoulda, woulda, couldas, friends who think they missed something, and professionals who really tried hard to help and feel like they failed. His group home manager, still six years later, puts dozens of roses on his grave, and I keep hoping each year he will forget, that he will move on, but the impact of my son's suicide was so great on the staff who were working with him at that time. Many of them suffered for a year with alcoholism and other things, trying to adjust to the responsibility they felt for his loss. My daughter, Christian's sister, became suicidal in her grief, and we walked through several years of some pretty intense services for her. Fortunately, she is slowly recovering. It's been a really long haul for my family. All of my children have really struggled with this. Chris, the good part of it is that Christian's loss and my family's struggle to get him help have spurred me to work in the field. So, I work as a traditional health worker, supporting families with their own children with mental health disorders. I worked down at the Children's Farm Home as a Family Partnership Coordinator. I serve on committees and boards. I've been on committees with Ormond, who was up here speaking a few minutes ago. I'm the co-chair of the Children's System Advisory Council for the State of Oregon, work with peer workforce, and seeing what we do to change so there's people to walk, peers like me, someone who's lived it, to walk through with families. So, really grateful that I could come here and tell my story. I also felt a real connection. I love this park. I've been here for some of the historical reenactments. I look at that group of people, and I wonder how many of them were struggling back then with very little help for mental health disorders. I love, I have lots of friends who are foster care parents, and it's such a needed service. So, I'm just really thankful here today to hear the proclamations and the ongoing work and support for mental health awareness and also for zero suicide.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robin?
Hey. Good morning. Thanks for having us. I'm Robyn Cisco with Marion County Health and Human Services. I'm just going to talk a little bit about the services and supports that are available for people that are struggling with mental health. It's important to remember that there are a lot of effective treatment options and supports available to individuals and families that are struggling with mental health in our community. As Carrie was speaking to earlier, and Mary, it's our hope that our community and our society, our larger society, is beginning to see that it is okay and it is normal to seek out help and support for mental health, and that in fact, mental health isn't something separate from our physical health, but that it is interconnected. Marion County offers a broad range of services and supports to individuals and families across the age spectrum, and the treatments can work. We have services available in a large variety of settings. People can get services and treatment in clinics, in traditional clinics, in primary care, in schools, in the homes, in the community. Services can include things like early intervention, individual therapies, group therapies, family therapies, case management and skills training. We also have supports and services that are like peer supports and advocacy, traditional health workers like Mary, wraparound services, supported employment services, supportive housing, and treatment courts. Finally, we have crisis services available to kids, families, and adults, and this can include things like respite, emergency room diversion, case management, as well as suicide prevention, and suicide risk assessment and intervention. And I think Phil's going to speak to some of the activities that we have this month.
Morning. Thank you for having me. To talk to a little bit of what Ormond talked about, bringing mental health out of the shadows, it'd be great to talk about what we're doing for the next month. So, this month, we're doing a couple of awarenesses. We're doing Salem Health, Raising Mental Health Awareness, May 5. Then we're doing, we're supporting Oregon Family Support Network with Children's Mental Health Awareness Day on the Capitol, May 10. And then Chomeka's Mental Health Awareness Conference, May 18. And then Marion County Health and Human Services is pulling together a vision of Zero Suicides, a call to action, May 9. We're pulling together all the task forces that have been developed probably in the last three, three to six months in relation to the suicides that have been occurring in the county, and trying to convene all of those key stakeholders into looking at how do we best approach and utilize all the resources that are available. By having all the right people at the table, we hope to coordinate and strengthen the community's shared leverage to impact change in addressing the stigma of seeking services and striving for zero suicides. So, thank you. Carrie?
Well, thank you all. So, I would just like to conclude by saying there are more than 43 million Americans that at some point in time have dealt with a mental health condition. Mental health challenges are common, yet stigma persists. I see this mental health awareness campaign as just that, finding a place and a space in our community to talk openly about our challenges, that's the primary thing we can do to reduce stigma. Suffering in silence doesn't help. Most of the time, it's sort of compounds the problem. So, thank you, Commissioners, for your time this morning and the consideration of the proclamation before you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for being here, and thank you for your stories. My mind was turned, as you were talking, to a friend of mine. She, I was a committee administrator, and she was a committee assistant at the legislature. We worked together for an entire session, and those of you that are familiar with the legislative process know that you can get very close to the people that you work with during some very intense times. And then later on, when I was a legislator, she was my legislative aide, and so we worked closely together. And then when I became a county commissioner, we were talking about how she might come over to the board office in Marion County, and she was going to come over as a temporary worker in February. And so, I got a call, and so I remember exactly where I was and what was going on. It was legal to talk on the cell phone at that time, and I was pulling into the Shopko parking lot, and her husband called and said that she would not be coming in to work the next day because she had taken her life. And it felt like someone had just kicked me in the stomach, and, and he was in shock, you could tell. And just the ripple effect that, that you talked about in terms of all of the different friends, and years later, I, we're moving right now, and so I'm going through boxes of cards and letters and things, and I've been finding, you know, cards that she sent me and work that we did together. Her daughter, she left a daughter who was a senior in high school that was just a few months from her graduation. She left a son who was younger, who just came over to visit with me this year because he's finally kind of understanding the impact of what happened and trying to reconnect with the people that knew his mother and get to know her a little bit better. But it was as if, I mean, I had a very hard time believing initially that she chose to take her life, and I tried to search so much for answers about why she might have done that as compared to all the other choices that she had. But in the end, that was the choice that she made, but it's still very, very difficult. So, I applaud everyone that works on suicide prevention because it is such a final option that people take for the things that they face. And I know from the work that you do that there are better options out there. So, thank you. Any other questions?
Leave it there.
All right.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion that we approve a proclamation that does proclaim Mental Health Month in May.
I will second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve a proclamation designating May 2018, and I think it's Mental Health Awareness Month. Is that what we're proclaiming? The one paper says Mental Health Month, but the proclamation says Mental Health Awareness Month. So, that will be our motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that is approved. And let's read this one. Commissioner Brentano, why don't you start?
All right, I got the fancy copy.
Okay.
In the matter of proclaiming the month of May 2018 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Marion County, this matter came before the Marion County Board of Commissioners at its regularly scheduled public meeting on May 2, 2018. Whereas Marion County strives to support the choices of individuals with mental health needs and their families by promoting and providing services that are person-centered, person-directed, flexible, trauma-informed, culturally responsive, and community-inclusive. And whereas Marion County is committed to work towards service options to assure that individuals with mental health needs have the opportunity to live fulfilling and meaningful lives, and...
Whereas Marion County supports the social determinants of health and for, for and with individuals and families with mental health needs. And whereas Marion County supports the discovery and development of the unique gifts, talents, and abilities of all. And whereas Marion County believes that a greater focus on wellness and recovery promotes the value that individuals with mental health challenges can lead full and productive lives, and...
Whereas Marion County seeks to advance social and policy change so that individuals with mental health needs may know that they are not alone, that hope exists, and the possibility of healing and thriving is real. And whereas Marion County seeks to raise awareness of mental health and to eliminate the stigma associated with mental health treatment that exists. Therefore, it is hereby proclaimed that the month of May 2018 is Mental Health Awareness Month in Marion County. And is this, yes, here we go. Okay, so we just have one more item of business, and that's our consent agenda.
Could you work on this one now?
Oh, you want to, I'm sorry, I didn't notice.
It's not on the agenda.
Do you want to talk about this?
That's, thank you.
All right, thank you.
So, I was going through Facebook this week and ran into a subject that's close to me and personal, and hesitated to even bring it up, but I'm going to now, and then I'll, well, just let me talk for a minute. It has to do with, it's a proclamation that's been approved by many governors around the United States with a subject that probably nobody's even heard of. It's called a proclamation observance of Cretashaw Syndrome and Awareness, which happens to be, and why it's timely, is May 5 is the national day or international day of remembrance. It's personal to me because my granddaughter, Caroline, I was trying to think the right word, and as I talked just for a minute, suffers, I'll say, but she's afflicted by it. What it is, what's the right word? It happens, it's not really a genetic, but an actual mechanical break off of a chromosome, and then it's like building a house without the full set of plans. So, I wasn't even going to bring this up, but this is serendipity or whatever. My wife sets out some clothes for me, and this morning, she set out the tie that happens to have pictures of Caroline on it, and I thought, well, that's kind of a sign. So, if you allow me just a minute, I'll just tell you. I thought, well, what am I trying to accomplish? That's why I didn't want to do it. It's personal, I'm not looking for attention or sympathy for her. But in the proclamation in the last whereas, it talks about the need for awareness and need for doctors to know. And let me just quickly tell you the story. When she was born, the doctors told us that she would lay in a bed and look at the ceiling her entire life. Well, that isn't how it is. You can't see this picture on my tie, but she can walk now, she gets on the bus and goes to classes, still has trouble eating. It's so very rare, one in 50,000, so when I say it's personal, I don't even know if there's another one in Oregon, I haven't been introduced to any. But I just wanted to let people know that this disease is there, the information that's given to people when the babies are diagnosed isn't accurate. With family involvement, they can and do thrive. Yeah, see, you started me getting sad already on the last one, but Caroline is thriving. So, I'll just read that last whereas, and then one last comment. It says, whereas one of the goals of the Cretashaw Awareness Week is to end the outdated misinformation given to families when their child is diagnosed with Cretashaw, and raise awareness, as some cases, a Cretashaw syndrome may go undiagnosed. So, I think I bring it up for the personal raising to, yeah, I don't know if I can do this, but I'm really proud of what she does and the way my family's helped her. Now, I'm done.
Did you want to take action on something like this?
It isn't on the agenda, but we could.
Do you want to do that? We could.
Madam Chair, if I could make a motion to add, first of all, add this proclamation to our agenda. I'll make a motion to do that.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to add to the agenda, a proclamation declaring May 5, 2018, as Cretashaw Syndrome Awareness Day in Marion County. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and now the second part of your motion?
Madam Chair, I'll move that we adopt the proclamation declaring Cretashaw Syndrome Awareness Day of May 5, 2018.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation, which Christie can do after the fact, and we can get signatures later. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye. And thank you.
All right, that is approved. Thank you. Did you want to read any more of it, or?
No.
No, okay, good. All right, thank you. So, let's move now last into our consent agenda. Commissioner, you want to go ahead?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll move the consent agenda. First item, under the Board of Commissioners, OLCC application recommended approval, Menno Island Grocers LLC, Salem, Oregon. Under Business Services, consider a recommendation to adjust upward pay grades for classification number 038, election board worker. Number 119, EBW labeling. Number 120, EBW inserting. Number 121, EBW processing. Number 122, EBW recount. Number 129, EBW archiving. Number 131, EBW reading, reader room. Number 132, EBW supervisor. Number 133, EBW PCPs counting. Number 135, EBW general A. Number 145, EBW general B. Number 146, EBW office EB1. Number 149, EBW pre-inspection. Number 150, EBW duplicating. Number 151, EBW write-ins. Number 152, EBW opening. Number 500, human services trainee. Number 604, information technology intern. And under Health, consider approval of order appointing Erlene Camarillo, Camarillo, to the Health Advisory Board with a term ending June 30, 2022.
You have a second? The motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. I didn't get all those positions. Would you just read them all one more time?
You know, Madam Chair, I was thinking I could be Ovi at the Capitol, how he reads really fast. I was trying to go fast.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, all those items are approved. So, that concludes our agenda for today's board meeting. To notice, meetings for the upcoming week, we always read our Wednesday to Wednesday calendar. At noon today, this is still May the 2nd, we will be going to Luis's Taqueria in Woodburn at 523 Front Street for the Woodburn Marion County Meeting. And this evening, Wednesday, May 2nd, at 5:30 is the Marion County Fair Board Meeting. That will be held in the Commissioners' Boardroom, 5th floor, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. Tomorrow, Thursday, May 3rd, at 7:00 a.m. is the Salem Area Chamber of Commerce Public Policy Meeting. That's held in their offices at 110 Commercial, 1110 Commercial Street Northeast in Salem. At 8:00 a.m. is the Courthouse Square Breakfast benefiting Marion County Employee Food Drive at Courthouse Square, looks like on the 5th floor in Salem. 9:30, oh, that's been canceled, so the Department of Elec officials meeting has been canceled. So 11:30 to 12:30, there'll be a one-on-one with elected official Honorable Janice Zernoff for our Marion County Justice Court. That will be in the Silverton Conference Room, not the Swamp Box Conference Room on Court, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. At 2 o'clock Thursday is a work session on airports update and grant status, also in the Silverton Conference Room. Then on Monday at 8:30 is our regular weekly calendar review in the Silverton Conference Room, followed by management update at 9 o'clock in the Silverton Conference Room. And then at noon, the Commissioners will be taking a Salem Airport tour at the Salem Air Center, 3325th Street Southeast in Salem. 4 o'clock is a one-on-one with Department Head Scott Emery. He's with our Information Technology Department in the Silverton Conference Room. Then Tuesday, May 8th, is our Staton Marion County Meeting, monthly meeting at the Covered Bridge Cafe, 510 North 3rd Avenue in Staton, followed at 9:30 by a Board of Commissioners Safety Meeting in the Silverton Conference Room. Then at 2:30 is the one-on-one with Department Head Tamara Getch from Community Services in the Silverton Conference Room. At 4 o'clock, the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council Meeting, which will be this time at Willamette Valley Communications Center at 595 Cottage Street Northeast in Salem. We'll be touring the 911 Center, which Jolene remembers very vividly. And then a week from today, May 9th, Wednesday at 9:00 a.m., we will be back at the Senator Hearing Room in Salem for our regular Wednesday board session, followed at 1 o'clock by an executive session pursuant to ORS 192662H in the Silverton Conference Room. So as we conclude our meeting, any parting thoughts?
Thank you. I have a couple I'd like to be last.
Okay, Commissioner? He wants to be last, so you get to be first.
Well, you could go first, Stan. No, it's been great to be here and be educated on some history, celebrate. What's that?
Music in the air.
Go ahead.
Oh, no, here we go. Celebrate 175 years of the county. And I don't think that, Greg, you pointed out how vast and wide Marion County was. We actually let Canada have some of their property back and went all the way to the Rocky Mountains over there.
Big county.
Big, big, big. So it's been great to be here, and I'm looking forward to a little bit of a tour, I think, after this to even get educated some more. And just want to thank all the people that came today and all the work that was done to bring us here, as well as the proclamations that we honored today. It was a good day to be here. I'm glad we came on the road.
Yes.
Yeah, it was good.
All right, I'll let you talk. What do you want to say?
Well, first, this is legitimate. It says, please invite everyone to tour the interpretive exhibit. And I think that'd be a good idea. But now, if you'd stand up, I'd like to try something. I'm told, and I'm always trying to find singing opportunities for Commissioner Carlson.
Yes, this is why I...
I'm told she knows all the words.
I do know all the words. So if you know the Oregon song, you can sing it along with me, all right? Sam's going to try to keep up, right?
Why, get most of them.
(singing) Land of the empire builders, land of the golden west, conquered and led by freemen, fairest and the best. Onward and upward ever, forward and on and on. Hail to thee, land of heroes, my Oregon. And I know the second verse too. You never forget what you learn in fourth grade, so. All right, are we done? We are adjourned. Thank you.